Second one, February. And if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So I'm not using that anymore.
We picked up the agenda, you see we've got quite a few items here to run through. First of all, beginning with the approval of events of the February 3rd, 2020 meeting. And Lauren will be with us today, so it's just Steve and I.
I'm taking a motion to approve the minutes for February 3rd.
Okay, and I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Excuse me.
I'll try to make a file.
Alright, I can put it over here too if you want me to.
Okay, yeah, I'll probably drop.
Approval of claims for PPE. Now that's payroll, where's it, what's PPE being?
Payroll period ending.
Period payroll period ending.
Or check.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
That's big D E to me. I went through these earlier, Chairman, and I'd like to make a motion to approve all the claims. At one motion and we just do the signing.
Always, all the way down?
Yes, sir. We can read them or just sign them.
Okay. Is there any reason we can't do that Ted?
No.
That's a very good idea. So we have also approval of a correction in the emergency planning rights and no grant. Approval of certified shares for monthly claims in the amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand plus dollars. Now that, that is dividing between the municipalities and the corporate corporations and all those things.
Right. This and the next two are going to be on your agenda every month.
Every month?
Yes.
That's a new thing by the board of accounts that we're gonna do it every month. Okay. And then we have February edit, monthly claims in the amount of fifty-seven thousand three forty-eight seventy-two. Approval of PSAP, monthly claims. That's public safety tax. Goes to mostly police. Approval of tax sales surplus. How do we have a tax sales surplus?
That is someone that has come in and claimed their property.
Paid back.
Or received money for.
Uh-huh. Okay. Approval of early claims. Those are our utility bills, like we have to pay early. Approval of jury claims, you know, nine hundred and three dollars. Approval of Benetex claims. What are Benetex claims?
They're insurance claims that used to be just taken out of our payroll for our bank accounts and their billings.
Approval of health and supplement insurance claims and approval of Benetex claim in the amount of five hundred and twenty dollars. Forty-seven. Our last time that we had an audit and went through all the things with the
State Board of Accounts.
State Board of Accounts, yeah. Suggested that, it isn't great on a lot, by the way, but they suggested that a lot of these things could be itemized and have on there rather than doing them once a year or just pay. So it's gonna increase a lot, our amount of claims that we pay every day. And some of these are under names that I'm not familiar with, but it's the new state board of account. So you made a motion to approve them all.
Yes, sir.
I will second that. Any comment from anybody? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Let's start signing. We are down to nine oh five. Mr. Dick Richardson and Jerry Golds.
We put Dan Ward in case Mr. Golds keeps working and they have a farm situation this morning and needing him back, so he cannot. I'm here representing the Burlington Community Club. This club has been in existence from way back, forty, fifty years. Each year they put on a festival in the town of Burlington. Situations have changed in the business community. The business donations aren't there this year. We are doing a major renovation and looking to get more into the wedding and whatever categories for fundraising. So this looks like maybe probably a one-time request. We work hand in hand with the park board at Burlington. And I think you've already seen a request from someone about major upgrades to the parks buildings. We're in the third year of a three-year phase and we should be able to compete with others for weddings and things like that, which will provide more income. But, purpose of the festival is to raise money financially for the fireworks the next year. And income has been down in the past years. Again, businesses in that area are not able to make the donations they have in the past. So we've come into you today to requesting what looks like a one-time grant of three thousand dollars or whatever your board can provide. The festival will be on September nineteenth and twentieth. We've removed it from three days to two to try to convince it and keep it going. Our purpose is to give a time for the community over in that area to come out and fellowship and work together. This grant will allow us to bring a different category of entertainment than we've had lately and maybe get more people there and keep the community coming to these kind of festivals. So we appreciate whatever you could look at and consider possibly funding if possible.
Okay. We certainly want to support Burlington in any way we can as we want to support Florida, Delphi, Youngman, Camden. And we really also try to be unincorporated communities like Rockville and Cutler and those. Our edit monies are usually decided before now. And for this person bringing this coming, coming year. Usually we take, we request during the summertime for requests like this and we go through them all. And we take the amount of money that we have. The edit money is an economic development income tax that comes into, into us out of every taxpayer in the county. And then we can disperse it into things that are supposed to be for development of economic development. Now, we have for years, like you say, your tax or your organization for a long time, edit doesn't go back that far, but it goes back quite a ways. And it has been, originally was only used for strictly economic development budgets. Like streets for a new factory coming in, a road for a new factory or something of that type of stuff. Or an economic development program like where you have a director who actually goes out and does selling for the county and tries to bring in into the street, things of that type. As time went on, we didn't change it, but the state changed it to be, could also be quality of life things. So that as you're talking about, definitely it's a quality of life thing in Burlington. It's something you do that enhances the whole life of the community there. And as somebody who comes to your park, I live in Cutler, so coming over to your park and attending things there and going to your festival, I very much enjoy. Normally I would say there isn't any way we can get it in for this year because it's already been decided. However, this year, okay, when first, when the edit first came out, commissioners decided it and that was it. Then after a few years, the legislature decided, no, we're gonna run this in the same way we do most of the other things. And that is, we decided it has to be approved by the council. Which is fine. But this year the council has made several recommendations. They did not fund what we, what we proposed. So I think we're about to act to square one really on it all. So it may be, maybe that we've hit on here where it might work. We had originally, yeah, right here. Put, I just tell you what, we got forty-five thousand dollars for the county chamber of commerce. Hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the economic development corporation. Three thousand dollars for the Delphi Chamber, which is for promotion of the old settlers. We put ten thousand dollars in for the Lake Association who's fighting the situation of yeah, the mussels. The Indiana Department of Natural Resources has decided that, that Lake Freeman can be used as a reservoir to keep the Tepico New River full. Which could very well result in the draining of Lake Freeman, which the Lake Freeman people have been fighting. And Lake Freeman is a, not only a very important part population-wise of the county, but it is a incredible tax revenue for the county. There's huge amounts of taxes coming from the lake up there. So, and Lake County puts in quite a bit of this. We decided to put in ten thousand dollars. The council said, no, they don't want us to put any money into that. And I could argue either side of this. That it's a, it's a tremendous moneymaker for the county, but it, but on the other hand, they have the Lake Association, which is, that could charge a great deal more. They charge just a pinch to everybody up there. So they could raise what we do just like that by changing their duties. So I can argue it either way. And also we put in two hundred and forty thousand dollars into the county highway program. Which we have done similar amounts to that for several years now. Because we felt like that the improvement of roads in the county, which we've made vast improvements in the last several years, is an important part of, of quality of life for our people. The council did not see fit to fund that either. So as of right now, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Two forty for the county highway and ten thousand for the Lake Association that county council objects to spending. Now the way this works is, they don't have, the council does not have the ability to line item out things. Their only responsibility is to either pass the whole thing or reject the whole thing. So they have rejected everything because of those two items. So county chamber's getting nothing, EDC's getting nothing, the Delphi Chamber's getting nothing in addition to the Lake Association and county highway, unless the three of us come back and revise it to something they like. So this may very well be a time when we might have some extra money there. Now, people have said to me several times, well, I see on here for the Delphi Chamber and I see for the Lake Association, but I don't see anything on here for Florida, Burlington or Camden. And you said, well, nobody's ever asked us for any. So I appreciate being able to help Delphi, or Burlington with something here. What we'll have to do is just put it in here and then the three of us will have to figure out how that we're going to come back at this. Because at this point, we have no budget for, for economic development. It's very rare for us for this time of year. If there are, I've had some criticisms of, well, do you want to really get into backing, you know, Florida's festivals and Camden festivals, tractor pulls and Burlington festivals, the like? And I guess, in a way I say, yeah, I do. Because that's what the legislature has decided that this money is for, is for promotion of the county in one way or another. And I feel like that, okay, promotion of Burlington is a good thing. What we could do to help that festival. And I, I understand well how that merchants get hit for lots of things. And after a while, you just kind of say, I can't do all this. For years of, well, forty, forty-five years, I have business in Roswell. And boy, I'm telling you, between the softball and the FFA and everything that comes in, I mean, it's just, and especially in the springtime, it seemed like. Everybody was coming in with a good project and boy, they needed our help. And after a while, you just, you just say, oh, I can't, I can't do everything. So this may be a good opportunity for us to help Burlington out.
I'm not answering.
I am too. So especially since we can't give that ten thousand to the Lake Association, maybe bringing three for Burlington would be a good opportunity there. I guess I would say that we feel like Burlington is a wonderful community on our kind of edge down there, almost out of the county. But that we want to support it. And so I don't want you to think that this has to be an only one-time thing. We'll try, we'll try to do what we can this year. We'll look this over, see if we can get something that will pass the council. And we want to help Burlington however we can. However, we can work together for the Burlington community on this. So I can't give you an answer right now. I want to wait till all three of us can get together and, and work this over. But I think Steve just said he's in favor of it, I'm in favor of it. And I think Lauren will be too and we'll, we'll work something out. Okay?
Okay.
I appreciate it very much.
I have a little bit here with contact information and what it's about, so if you would have that. You'd want that for each of you?
Okay. Did you email me a couple of times?
No, sir.
Okay. Somebody from Burlington emailed me and said, well, how do we get in on our edit money? And, and
Okay. No, I, I would say this, I was at the town meeting for Burlington.
Okay.
And a representative from the comments said, there's possibilities. No, nothing guaranteed, but make a request and see where it might go.
We just get a, a dispersment from the state of regiving, sending back our tax money that our people paid in. And so then we know this is how much money we have and we divide it up. We have accrued a little extra in there through the years, but we don't like to spend more than what we have coming in each year.
We understand that. We're a nonprofit also.
Yeah, okay. We're supposed to be.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
EMA Director Mike.
Morning, sir. Hopefully I can get through these pretty quick and we'll get you back on the schedule. As you know, when I came on the council and everybody approved the radio tower project and put the RMC tower up. Then there was some money that was given by RDC and, but we made the final payment to Motorola for the radios and we had fifty thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents left.
Wait a minute, let me wait there. Fifty thousand?
Eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
That doesn't have.
Doesn't have, not at all. So with that, what I'd like to do is improve the communications for EMS. Get them both eight hundred and VHF radios in each one of the ambulance garages. That'll also help us if we have a disaster or we can set up a medical command post in that area if we need to. Along with replacing all their mobiles, they're running off the old EF Johnson radios. So.
So you talk radio language, I really don't.
It's EF Johnsons are, yours are about, what, twelve, ten, twelve years old. So they're getting close to the end of their lifespan. Technology keeps advancing and these older radios cannot get the updates that are required. They just won't take them. So every so often you do have to buy radios, like we did purchase thirty radios for the sheriff's department as part of the project.
How many radios do you need?
Well, I got the quotes for you. He's been testing out Harris radios, another radio that used to have the DOD contract. They're a mill strike radio, so you can't drop them. And so far, between my testing and their testing, they're working quite well. And they are a little bit cheaper. They are a little bit cheaper than Motorola's.
They're out there on the street, they're expensive. And they're just as important as getting radio signal from you, they are as important as fire. If we approve it, how long would it take to get these in service?
The mobiles, or the portables, I can have in about three weeks. Of course, I gotta go to the council and do an additional because we didn't.
Right. The ones in the station area, do install them, you ain't got much money on it.
Well, there is, the installation is in here.
Okay.
The mobiles, what we're doing with the mobiles, there are mobile radios that are in the ambulances getting replaced when they get the new ambulances. So these mobiles are going in as base stations at the garages.
For three drivers?
For the three drivers. And right now they just have a VHF antenna on them, so we add an eight hundred antenna to it. And costing the sorages also.
Better quality of service for them. And because sometimes you get in areas you can't hear.
Right, and that's, that way they can flip over to VHF. Especially if Doug or Dan are on scene, they'll be able to talk to the radios without holding multiple radios.
Are you sure you got that fifty thousand left?
I've double-checked and triple-checked with the auditor and that's the amount that we have.
Do you have a question?
Well, Ed pointed out to me that the money was covered in force, it's a new contract.
Are you the cybersecurity?
He had told me that the council had told him that he got to do an additional, so that's why I was just checking. And he said yes.
So it gets to be used, because it's still for radios kind of, but just a different kind of.
Well, you know, it depends on how, how the cover was ordered to the councils.
Well, they went, it was a contract that someone used and they encumbered it. So they had advised Ken that he had to do an additional to get, to use the rest of the money for a different purpose. And I was double-checking with Ken and they said yes too, so.
They were awarded to be okay with it?
Well, yeah, I, I think you need to request the council for an additional preparation for that contract.
So in essence, the fifty thousand dollars goes back in the general fund and then we gotta request, no?
It just stays right there and you need to ask if, hey, one additional out of the county general, how that fund or that line up.
It's for different radios, isn't it? It's not for the same.
They're not Motorola's.
Yeah, they weren't.
Motorola's probably.
Yeah, the radios, but they're still different contracts, so.
Okay, so our encumbrage is still there, right?
Right, they already used the encumbrage, probably. Right. Are you going to?
Well, that's, we used what we encumbered. We encumbered the whole hundred and twenty-three thousand that was left to pay. I got the final bill and it was seventy-two thousand some money other than that. So we paid it off. And this is what is left out of that.
So we only need to go to council if this with our approval, if we approve it to get into radios for safety and security of our employees. I'll make that motion then that we go to council and approve a request of an additional for this. And get them radios in.
Is that right Ted?
Yes.
I'll second that. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And then last month, Tim, when I also talked to you about the county's multi-hazard mitigation plan. That was a plan that we were working on all of last year. It's been approved by FEMA pending adoption. I did give you guys copies, hopefully, yes, a hundred and fifty-seven pages.
I read every book.
I'm sure you did. Just to remind you, for us, if we, since adopting this plan, it'll make itself a good for pre-mitigation funds. Should FEMA be sending grants for pre-mitigation. So what I'm coming to today is ask for you to adopt it. We've already had Youngman, Delphi, Florida and Camden have adopted. Burlington will be adopting it next month. And then
She's recording right here.
It's okay.
In two schools, one to that approach. Should be a resolution, twenty twenty oh two.
So you went through this for your. So you know what it is then?
Yeah.
So we need to read it by ordinance only?
No, it's a resolution.
What's a resolution?
So it's, it's be approved on those stuff.
I'll make a motion. Adopt resolution twenty twenty oh two.
I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty oh two, which is a resolution of the board of commissioners of the county of Carroll adopting the two thousand nineteen multi-hazard mitigation plan, which is a very thorough plan. And I will second that. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Sign it, please, one of the meeting certified.
Lighting's going downhill.
This is just a regular Ted, we do it every year.
The.
Yes. The maintenance program. Do you sign it?
Yeah, I mean, yes, please.
Okay, the next one I just handed to you is our, it's the federal field services annual preventive maintenance inspection agreement. They come out and do the inspection on the three sovereigns that are down at the river.
It's just a three, right?
Just a three. Those are the only three that the county owns. The rest are either owned by the townships or the towns or the city.
And since we've had, had any issue with them either, I mean?
The ones on the river?
Yeah.
I got one that's, I'm gonna check again, which I'm gonna probably have to pull some money out of my expendable. It's rotating, but there's no sound. So it'll be coming down within the next week. It's rotating, but there's no sound until it becomes down within the next week or so.
What three are ours again?
Porche Bend, the one up by Oakdale and the one onto Cumcunville.
Just three of them?
Just the three of them.
Cause they do, they're multifunctional, right? Live warning and...
Well, it's the same sound.
Same sound.
They just...
Okay, so you're asking for the four hundred and fifty dollars?
No, it was one thousand three hundred and sixty, it's four hundred and fifty per site.
Per site?
Yes.
Okay, annual cost is thirteen fifty. Now, with the call system that you have, are these still needed?
Yes, we have them and by Indiana code we have to maintain them until they're no longer viable.
Will we declare them no longer viable?
No.
No?
I mean, if it was, if it was destroyed in a tornado or something, I wouldn't have to replace it.
Well, it's not worth it.
But it's, it's also, you know, Code Red moves as fast as technology will let it move. As soon as we get the warning at nine thousand cubic feet per second, I can set those sirens off and it's an instant one. Where it might take Code Red to fifteen minutes, which, you know, depending on how you live life.
You have this in your...
Yes.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You need a signature on here?
Yes, sir.
Just your signature?
This one. Uh, the last thing that's on agenda for me is the cybersecurity. I know I've been hitting you guys a lot on it, but we're gonna have to start moving a little bit faster. Last week, another county got hit and they got hit hard enough that they got their server, their backup server and the cloud. We're still unsure how they got that far in. Still being investigated. But one way to add that extra, extra layer of security for us until FireEye gets installed is to stop the use of Gmail accounts for county business. Meaning that all county employees will have account email.
So we don't have funding for that just from the county? That's, that's pretty...
It's gotta be hefty and that, um... Yeah, I don't know.
You're talking about just ordering the...
No personal? No personal? Right, so Gmail, Yahoo, whatever other accounts are out there. Cause there are employees that are using them for, as their county email.
Yeah, I, I've already started on this. I've got some questions I gotta ask Randy. One of them that you can answer is, is this detectable by, are IT contracted by Randy?
The use of a personal email?
In words, if, if commissioners enter an order, ordinance and orders stopping of the use of personal email counseling on the county system, my question is, is this detectable by, uh, random inspection by...
Yes, of course. I'm ninety percent sure that it is.
I assume so. So...
Cause it all comes off IP addresses and there's different codes that come in.
So a check, a report can be generated, it's, or it can be a query or something like that?
Yes.
And they can generate a report. Okay, I just wanted to know.
That is just for the courthouse and some of the EMA departments because he doesn't service everybody.
But sure, pardon, the different IP.
And, and the courts would be subject to this.
Well, they hit the courts too. I mean, like in Lawrence County, kind of guy hit, they got a...
Sheriff's Department. It was Lawrence County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, but they got the courthouse, they got the courts.
They got through the sheriff's department. But the commissioners can't not enter an order that affects the courts or the, or the prosecutor. Prosecutor's a state officer.
Is he on our service?
Yep.
Pardon?
He's on our service, yeah.
Well, I mean, we would hope the courts would direct the personnel to do it, but, you know, separation of powers at the local level is that the civil authority doesn't have authority with the operation. Now, I, I know they're resident on the county system, but are they resident on the county system or not? That's another question I had. Is the, are they on the county server?
I'd have to double-check with Randy, but I'm...
That's what I, I got, that's one of the things I, I wanted to ask Randy, I mean, the law. So I don't think they can do anything effectively today as good.
We just ask them not to use their Gmail counseling.
Right, right. You can do that, you can pass a motion to request that all persons to the courthouse, you know, and all county employees.
Well, yeah, what about the ambulance?
No, that one, right one.
Right, all, all county departments, all your courts.
Because if they open Gmail down at the sheriff's department, that's got the virus in it and they email it to Beth, it's there.
Right.
So maybe only county official emails leave them coming in to the courthouse until further notice, until we get the virus.
I told the partner heads that I would not be sending out anything very personal email anymore, that mine would be from county emails. The only ones that I know of right now was Caroline does have one and she's been told to get that down and, but it has nothing, she didn't start that one.
Right.
I believe the health department has one.
And a Gmail account?
Mm-hmm, and the nine-one-one has, and if, if Cassie would do so, she could transfer some money into one and at least get that started cause it's vulnerable, you know, and then later on get an additional one if she would need it, but I would think we need to start it on that.
I'd rather spend five or six thousand than forty or fifty thousand or more.
Four hundred or five hundred?
Yeah. There's no way stopping a big one.
And they can detect, he can detect where this came from. So if someone does not change or if that virus comes in, he can tell exactly what the partner and who is what I was for.
But how do we stop the public from sending stuff in? If like questions...
Our people are just gonna have to be very, very careful on clicking on any attachments.
Well, I already failed the test myself.
I wasn't gonna knock you out, but you know...
Hey, I'll knock myself out. I did, I, I was one of the ones that tells this project. It was on my phone, but it stays on my phone, right?
Yes, it did not transfer to the server, but she forwarded it and then somebody else clicks on it.
The only time I've done a file.
But that, that didn't have a virus.
Right.
That was just a...
Still, I mean, I, I guess I need more training on that too, don't I?
And that's...
The only action you can take today is to, um, motion to authorize, or to direct that nobody use the personal email account on the county platform.
Guess that'll be my motion, is what I have to do.
As a request.
As a request.
Well, it, you can direct them, but it doesn't have any key to show you guys an order or...
Then split it, you can offer it in our personal policy.
It's not, it's, it's, it always says is, you can't, it's entitled by or whatever it is, it says you can't use it for personal purposes and, but it doesn't. And, and the personal policy doesn't apply to office owners.
Right.
Personal policy is not enough.
But you need to order the person.
Well, yeah, right. So I, I just need to talk to Randy to get a couple of items and we can, we can, then get the next...
So the motion would be, recommend not to use Gmail accounts if you're further in the...
You can direct, use the word direct, to direct that no county employees or office owners use the personal email accounts, access the personal email accounts on county, on the systems of their own like Carroll County. That would include the, at least to EMS, correct?
EMS, sheriff's department, and I think highway on their own.
I mean, they can still use them between themselves, they just can't forward them to the courthouse?
Well, that's, that's, that's a question, I don't know.
I mean, that's, cause I know if we do that today, you're, you're gonna be in trouble, aren't you?
Yeah, I, I mean, I have no way, I send every email out to their personal email. If there's anything I send out, it's their personal email.
But is it from a county-owned email or is it...
Yeah, it's from my email, which is county, yeah.
How's that work, right? Long as he's just communicating back and forth on his own, but it's still attached to his if you ever send anything in.
If it comes back.
Well, for example, I have an example. Like Mr. Richardson here, I emailed him about the agenda.
Right.
On a different account, but it came from my account. So if he would have responded back to me, is that wrong?
He should be okay as long as you don't click the link and you know for sure, you know, in, in the, where Randy and I showed you how to go up and double-check the email, you can actually see where it's coming from. I'll give you a perfect example, I'm not gonna use the employee's name.
Go ahead.
No, no. A bank account came in to personal, asking, and it even had the person's name, asking to change their bank account. And it wasn't from that person. What saved the county that time around is the policy that once you switch bank accounts, your first check is a paper check. And that's when everybody realized, boom. And the person called in, double-checked with HR and found out that it was him.
Doug, do you use yours on your phone or is it your computer at the station?
Both.
So do you, you got everybody's phone number, like where you sent them last text?
Yeah, we have a texting thing. But there's a lot of times, you know, Sessi will send me stuff about county business and I just forward that to everyone.
As long as it's going out and...
Not coming in?
Not, if it comes back and there's a link, just be very, very cautious of clicking on that link.
But the problem is, some, I mean, sometimes I'll send those emails out and they're at work and they check their, the only way to get those emails is to check their email accounts.
Right.
If they're coming out, it shouldn't be in this. But I'm not a cyber user.
Yeah. When we talk about it, kind of like...
It, it shouldn't be in this, in that it's when it's coming in and the links that are being attached, some people don't click.
Sounds like there's multiple ways to do the, you know, the worst one to the right way.
There'll never be an end to this.
No, not, cause everything that we create, we combat it, they'll find a way to get around it.
And keep going. I can remember when I was on the council many years ago and we decided to go to computers for courthouse, everybody having one, how much this was gonna save and how we were gonna save labor and we were going to, oh, this is just, it's been nothing but a raffle, throwing money down ever since. The old ledger books are by far the best system and they're the ones that are the hardest to get into, but the state mandates we have to do all this. Every, all communication with state, everything has to be by E, not by mail. So, I mean, whoever thinks that you put your, all your banking and everything online so everybody in the world can look at it and tap into it if they have the knowledge of how, and this is a good idea? It's a fool's paradise is what it is. Okay, we have a motion for...
Exactly, I mean, I suppose we just, it's good or hurt, nine-one-one and Doug.
Well, I mean, I guess we can wait until you talk to Randy and get a clear, on what he recommends.
We just use caution, I guess that's all we can say, use caution.
Until the rumors come out. But then, you know, we want to...